So, good afternoon, folks. It is Wednesday, December 18th. It's 12:03, and I'll call the Athens City Planning Commission meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is to establish whether we have a quorum. We have four of the five commission members here, so we do in fact have a quorum. I, we have quite an array of people here today, which is good. I would ask that those who would plan to speak, if they would raise their right hand. And so what I ask you to do is to, to the best of your knowledge, the information that you will pass on to this commission and to this community is correct and accurate and true to the best of your knowledge. And if you, if that's, if you're comfortable with that, say aye will. Thank you. We do need everybody to sign in, particularly those who are going to speak, so that we have that for the record. So, I don't know, I don't want to cause, that's, that'd be great to pass it around, so people could then sign in while we're proceeding with the issue or the agenda. Before we get started on the agenda, I would like to propose to the commission that we make an adjustment and move one of the communications to the front of the, to the, to the front of the agenda. And that would be the Ohio University Trans, Station, Ohio University Research Center. And if, if I could get a motion to do that, I would.
I move.
Move, and a second? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. So, we'll move the, the communication ahead of the cases, that particular communication. So, the first item on the agenda is the disposition of minutes. Everybody should have had those minutes, and I would ask whether any, any concerns or corrections that need to be made to those, does anybody see anything there? And if not, I would entertain a motion to, to, to entertain a motion so that we could approve the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second. Any, any, any comments or corrections? No? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay, it's passed. So, let's start then with the communication from Ohio University.
Thanks for the opportunity to come and talk, talk with you for a few minutes today. My name is John Cozad. I'm the Associate Vice President for Design and Construction at OU. Joining me in the audience is Tony Bertino. He's the Senior Project, Project Manager at the university, and he's leading the project that I want to share with you today. So, I have a brief presentation, I'm not sure if we can maybe put it, there we go. I'll spend just a couple of minutes here. I wanted to give you an overview of a project that we have that'll be starting construction on main campus here in Athens for the university in January. I want to outline a couple of non-conformances that we have with the zoning ordinance, and then provide an opportunity for any questions, if you have any. So, just to give you an overview of what the project is, it's the Heritage Translational Research Center. It's a new research building that we're building for the College of Medicine. This is a site overview that shows you the sighting of the building. It's on West Union Street Green, if you're familiar with where Heritage Hall is, it's just across Factory Street from Heritage Hall, and it'll be situated on the south side of the parking lot, which is just south of the Medical Education Center. Many of you probably know it as the old Human Resources Building on campus. It's an 80,000 square foot, four-story facility. It, it has an interesting program in that it's a research facility that has everything from animal care facility within the building to a public health clinic, where we'll be doing patient care delivery in this building. So, a pretty interesting and unique program. It's one of only a few facilities like this that exist in the country, and it's something that our College of Medicine is excited to have to be able to continue their partnership with the community in providing public health care within this facility on our campus. I wanted to go for just a minute over some of the design drivers for the project. I'm going to hit a couple of key points that are bolted on this slide, and certainly I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. So, one of the core tenets of the facility is that it needs to be very functional and flexible for the research program. Some of you may know that Ohio University is now a Carnegie R1 research institution, which is something that we're very proud of, and we want to continue to build on with our sponsored research program on campus. And having this facility is going to provide that very functional space that also can be flexible to meet future research needs as well. This building is actually being partially funded with a grant from the National Institute of Health, and we plan to do NIH-sponsored research in the building. It's going to be very visible and accessible. I mentioned that there's a community component and a public health component that'll happen within this building. Collaboration, sustainability, and creating a healthy legacy with this facility on our campus. I have a couple of images, just to give you a sense of what the building will look like. We plan to start construction in early January, so you will see site impacts that will start to happen at the beginning of the year. We've actually already mobilized some office trailers for our construction crew, and we'll be taking that parking lot offline at the beginning of the year. This is a view of the, of the building from the northeast corner of the building site, looking toward the southwest. Couple of things I'll draw your attention to here. Size and scale, this building reflects Heritage Hall very well in terms of the overall height, which I have illustrated on a, a slide in just a moment, as well as the, the length and the scale of the building. Something that's very important to us in this project is creating some new green space on this part of campus. So, as, as with many members of the city of Athens, the university values our green space, so we're creating this new green space, taking off impermeable surfaces, removing a parking lot to create green space that'll be there for the university and for the community. We do have a few parking spaces that will be immediately adjacent to the building, that'll be primarily for accessible parking. And then we also do have a drop-off space that's on the south side of the building, where patient drop-off will happen. This image is from the southwest corner, kind of opposite from that last image, looking toward the northeast. We're looking up Factory Street in this image, on the left-hand side is Heritage Hall, and then in the center of the image there is the new Translational Research Center. You can see on the right side of the screen, the drop, patient drop-off area. And one of the non-conformances I wanted to talk about with you today is the overall height of the building. So, this is in the M-zone of the city. Part of, part of the zoning requirement is the maximum height of the building is 45 feet or three and a half stories. This building's actually 64 feet tall, so it's higher than the maximum allowable height. The reason that the building is higher than the maximum allowable height in a M-zone is that we wanted to minimize the footprint of the building, so that we could preserve some of that green space that I've just talked about, while also having this consolidated program on this part of campus. We also have one other non-conformance, which is the setback, the front yard setback from Station Street. The setback requirement is 25 feet, we're setback 13 feet from the property line, and again, that's to create and preserve that green space. I will note that we have reviewed these plans with several members of the, of the city, including the Engineering and Public Works Office, and we've worked through, you know, any questions related to height, building setback, utility service, all of those sorts of things. So, are there any questions for me?
Three.
Sure.
One, I'm not sure I understand where exactly, I know where the Heritage College of Medicine, the existing building is.
Yeah.
Is this where the current HR building is?
This is the parking lot just south of the HR building.
So, the HR, the current HR building will remain?
It will remain.
There is, the new translational research, it's going to have green space in between.
That's right.
I understand the going higher to, to preserve green space. I don't quite understand the 13-foot less from the border to make for more green space, but I could accept that. I'd offer a comment, that if you're doing translational research, I don't know how far you are in the design, probably pretty far, considering January. But, I will speak as a senior citizen, as a former med school employee by 15 years, who is very actively involved with the public health program, and I would argue that of all things, you need a portrait share or some kind of thing that somebody can drive up to when they're in a wheelchair, because you're going to be seeing patients who are not mobile. And while the early parking offers access, you know, it doesn't, it's not quite the same as drop-off service, so it's just a comment.
Yeah.
And then you said that this, this is one of its kind, and congratulations on the NIH funding. You mentioned that this is going to be different in its scope for, as compared to other translational research centers. Do you know, very briefly, I don't need a detail, but just how? And I know you've got the public health component, and that may be how it's different.
Yeah, so, so, it's, it's not necessarily one of a kind, but one of only a few that exists in the country. I think there are about 15 or so buildings like this that have the program that includes an animal research facility, a, a basic science research facility, human subject research, so think, you know, biomechanics, musculoskeletal research, that will happen, as well as a public health clinic, all within one building.
Okay.
So, the translational component, you know, we refer to it as bench-to-bedside research, all housed within one facility, which is, represents a consolidation of multiple different research programs that have existed within the College of Medicine on our campus for, for many years.
So, will that mean that some of the biomedical science that's going on at the ridges is going to move down there?
Yes.
All of it?
From Conacher Research Lab, we will be vacating Conacher as, as a result of this.
Interesting. And then, so, Conacher's not part of the new community authority ridges, because OU had retained partnership. I'm just curious, if it's not pressing too much, what's going to happen to Conacher?
So, we, we actually, so the biomedical research portion that happens within Conacher is going to be moving to this new building. There will be a, a research program that still exists within Conacher in the immediate future, although I'll share that we're, we're working to try to find a new home for that research program as well. You may or may not be aware, but Conacher Research Lab has some significant building condition issues, and so we're working on identifying where we can move those programs to vacate that facility, and then we'll work on figuring out the future of the facility.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure, Tony, why don't you come on up here?
I'm not sure it was, it's on in the presentation, you don't see the site plan, but on the south side, there is a, there is a drop-off that is intended for what you mentioned, and a canopy as well that covers the handicap ramp.
Okay, thank you.
In the effort to, exactly like you say.
On a day like today, somebody in a wheelchair would have a hard time getting there.
Right, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you. That answers that question?
Megan?
So, excuse me, Mr. Cozad mentioned the height limits and the setback, and I just wanted to remind everybody that the bolt controls were updated, and so those actually, what they're proposing meets the new bolt controls. And municode online, the text in the table has yet to be updated, but the new ordinance is referenced. So, the new dimensions are uploaded but not updated within municode, if that makes sense. So, the new height maximums for the M1 are, is either 70 feet or six stories, and then there are no setback requirements for the M1.
Okay.
So, does he not need a variance, then?
No.
This is just a communication, they don't need approval from, from us or any.
So, really, he didn't even have to come.
But, we're happy to share. Andy and I have talked about the fact that that ordinance was changing. I actually looked online to see if the ordinance had been published, so I expected that it would be soon, but because it was not yet published, we wanted to come and provide this communication for the community, because, you know, per the zoning code, if we have a non-conformance, we are obligated to come and tell you about the non-conformances, and also share with you the reasons why we're non-conforming.
Completion date?
Fall of 2026.
Was that, yeah, I think, and it, I appreciate the, the communication nonetheless, because, you know, you'll be fencing off the area, taking parking offline, people will be wondering exactly what's going on, and this just is another way to communicate with our community, that this is what is happening. So, appreciate that very much. Are there any, are there any other questions?
John, I do have one other one, I didn't ask you before. I know animals are sleeping here, are people sleeping here, like spending the night as part of the research, or?
I don't believe so.
Don't think so? Okay. I mean, I know, like, maybe sleep study, they could go asleep, but not like spend the night. It's not like residential, very good, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Okay.
Thanks for clarifying.
So, now we'll get started with the cases. And before I, we, I introduce the first case, I would like to let everybody know that, that the, what we have are two apartment complexes that are being proposed, and what we're doing today is looking at the changing in zoning. And so, this is, this will be a long process, and right now, what we're focused on is changing the zoning here from an R1 or R2 to an R3. And so, with that in mind, just, just, you know, there'll be a, not that you cannot speak today, you're welcome to do that, but there'll be opportunities down the road, because this, this process will take, and before there is construction, probably more than a year before any of that happens, maybe even a little longer. So, again, we're, we're focused on two requests to rezone property here within our community. The first case is 2407, change request at Zero Pomeroy Road. Now, I think it's been about a month ago, we, we had, we brought that up for a vote, but it has been sent back from city council based on a review by the law director. So, the Zero Pomeroy Road project has been, is being reintroduced for the zoning, the proposed zoning change. So, with that, would somebody from the Pomeroy Road project, please introduce what you're, you're seeking?
Good afternoon, excuse me. My name's Sean McMichael, and I'm with Spire Development. We're the firm behind the proposed rezoning at Pomeroy Road. And yes, this particular case was brought before this commission back in November, and we presented on December 9th before city council for a communication, and it was a very spirited discussion at that level, and we received a lot of feedback, which, there were many concerns, which are all very valid, and since then, I have attempted to engage with stakeholders on their concerns, and I'd like to offer a few additional insights into our project, and also answer any additional questions that may have arisen since, since that proposed, or since that communication. So, to review, we are proposing rezoning the 8.2 acre parcel next to Carpet One Floor and More on Pomeroy Road from R1 to R3 zoning, and we are requesting this in order to develop a 50 or more unit multifamily development. The project will be a elevator service center corridor building with a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units. The project will be financed with tax credits, which is a federal tax credit that is allocated by the state of Ohio through a competitive process. And so, what this, this funding source does is it provides equity to help fund the construction of affordable housing, and in exchange, we are capped in the amount of rent that we can charge. So, we are charging rents that are affordable to people that are within the community. And so, with that quick review, again, there were many valid points brought up at city council, ranging from concerns with stormwater management and flooding on the site and in the corridor, to increases in traffic and crime. I think there may have been some confusion between the two proposed rezonings, and so I think that it's great that we're both here today, so that we can differentiate between the two as well. And so, the first one, to me, in, in re-reviewing the hearing, the loudest or the most pressing concern was that the site is prone to flooding. And in particular, the adjacent parcel that is owned by Carpet One Floor and More has experienced floods historically, and our proposed use would cause a hardship. We would worsen flooding in the area, and we would make the corridor even more flood-prone than it, than it currently is. And so, you know, as a company, we have developed a number of these projects, 30, 34 in total, we've done 17 in Ohio, we have four in Appalachia, two in Parkersburg, and multiple in Huntington, and so we're familiar with development in the Appalachian region, and we are very comfortable with the design characteristics that go into these projects. So, I tried to illustrate at the hearing that we will be improving the stormwater runoff on the site. So, specifically, in order to develop these projects, we have to go through engineering approvals through the county and through the city as well. And so, I do want to reiterate that, you know, this, today is a use discussion, not an engineering discussion. If, if we are approved for a rezoning down the road by city council, and if we receive funding and decide to move forward with the project, we would still be subject to an engineering review, and if what I'm saying is not true, we would not be able to develop the project. But, so, in order to develop a, a project like this, we will design stormwater detention using the critical storm method. Although very early in the process, we don't typically do it this early, we have decided to engage a civilian engineer in light of the expressed concerns, to make sure that, you know, our experience is, is still applicable to this site. So, Mark Welch with Pickering and Associates, he's the lead engineer with that firm, they have a Athens, Ohio office, is here today, and so he can speak to some of the nuances if there are further questions. But specifically to this site, I mean, we will be using the critical storm method, which performs a calculation of pre and post-existing impervious surface, and we will have an underground detention system, which will detain sheet flow for our project, and then also realistically coming down the hill from Pomeroy Road. And so, in doing so, we can't design a, a project that would cause undue hardship to other sites. We will be detaining the stormwater onsite and slowly releasing it into the existing storm system. Now, one of the concerns brought up even was by an individual stating that they understand that we might be detaining stormwater onsite, and that's all well and good, but during the construction phase, you know, there's going to be sediment and runoff issues, which that particular individual works as a developer for an affordable housing developer, Wada Cooper Companies, or historically has. So, I found that comment somewhat ironic, but they should know more than anyone that we will have a stormwater protection plan in place during the construction phase, which will include a silt fence and storm system protection, so that silt and stormwater is not flooding the detention system during the construction phases, and we are not able to release this silt containment engineered design until soils have been stabilized with grass and upon final design. So, we will not be causing undue sediment and runoff and erosion during the construction phase, and in fact, when the project is fully designed, we will be improving the stormwater runoff onsite. I did reach out to Eric Lucas, he's the owner of Carpet One Floor and More, and he is here today, and so if I am misrepresenting anything, I would, I hope he will correct me, but my understanding with my conversations with him is that he's not necessarily concerned with our project causing his property to flood, and that more so in recent years, it seems that there's an increase in runoff from the north along Coventry and Richland, which we are uphill from all of that, and we will not be affecting any of that as far as stormwater runoff. I also understand that there may be an Army Corps study being conducted on stormwater runoff in the area, and we have actually faced this exact same fact pattern before in, on a project in Hebron, Ohio, where we were developing a site that a recently released, an updated stormwater model was run, and it turned out that one of our sites ended up being in a floodplain. And so, this site is currently not in a floodplain, should it be determined to be in a floodplain, we have experience developing those sites. That project I mentioned in Hebron, Ohio is achieving certificate of occupancy this month, in fact. And so, again, we will not be worsening conditions onsite, we will be improving conditions onsite, and, you know, members from the community even, you know, admitted that this is an ideal use for the site, however, they just couldn't get past that stormwater runoff issue. And so, I do hope that, you know, this, this description of how we will be improving conditions onsite, and then also any more technical questions, which can be addressed by the project engineer, I hope that we can help to quell some of those concerns. And again, once, if this project were to move forward, we would be subject to a full engineering review, and if, if, if we are not able to design it in this manner, then we can't build the project, pure and simple. Another concern that was brought to light was that the proposed project will create an unsafe increase in traffic. There's an understanding that, you know, Pomeroy Road is a heavily trafficked road, and that this site in particular is in an area that, you know, just can't, simply cannot absorb any more traffic load. And so, again, you know, we always run traffic calculations before we pursue any site. There's a lot of risk in these developments. If we get ourselves into a situation where we can't build a safe and well-thought-out development as owners, there's financial risk and things involved in that. So, you know, we always try to assess the traffic and parking situation before we even extend an offer, to make sure that we're comfortable approaching a site. And so, in light of the concerns, though, I did want, we, we reached out to a certified traffic engineer, and they performed a, a traffic analysis specific to our site. And so, their findings, and I provided this in a packet earlier today, but their findings were that the project, specifically 50 units as proposed, will create a AM peak hour, so the most number of trips in one hour, AM peak hour of 25 trips between 7:00 and 9:00 AM. PM peak hour trips would be 23 trips between 4:00 and 6:00 PM. So, you know, between 25 and 23, that is the most number of trips that will go in and out of our property at one time during an hour. And so, when, and, and again, this is completed by a, a traffic engineer, the same engineers that design roads and highways. The study also took a look at The study also took a look at traffic flow on on Pomeroy Road and Richland Avenue, and they performed an analysis specific to the intersection of Pomeroy and Richland Avenue. And they found that, you know, this, these peak trip hours represent 1.9% to 1.9% of total peak hour trips at that intersection specifically. And so that just goes to illustrate that this is a small scale development. This is not something that is going to cause huge traffic flows requiring turn lanes and, you know, perhaps a road diet or something outrageous or egregious on the on Pomeroy Road. This is a standard sized development, small development in line with current traffic flow and patterns. And so I hope that, you know, objectively with with third party professional analysis, you know, we're just trying to illustrate that while valid concerns that, you know, there's nothing there, there will be an increase in traffic, you know, there's nothing there. But it is a very, very small increase in traffic, and it should not cause an unsafe increase in conditions. Another prominent concern is that the project will increase crime, increase crime in the neighborhood. And I think a lot of this concern was brought to light because of a recently completed project, Kershaw Green, which is, I believe, over 200 units or so on the other side of town. And so I do not have any affiliation with that company or that project. I can't speak to how it's operated, other than that's owned by one of the largest affordable housing developers in the country with over 15,000 units under management. I could, you know, I don't know how it's operated. But what I can speak to is that Spire Development is a medium sized firm. The owners of Spire Development are actively engaged in the daily oversight of their properties. They're involved in the management. We put a lot of work into our properties. We put a lot of hard work in our projects. We want good people to live there. We want it to be a good project. We want to be a part of the community for years to come. And so in, this is, this is a common concern that is often brought to light for these types of developments. And so in municipalities where this has been brought up as a concern, we have worked with local police forces to set up monthly call log meetings to see if there's a pattern of public service calls at the property. If there is a pattern exceedingly rare, if there is a pattern, Spire has a history of engaging with residents to either connect them with resources needed. Perhaps it is a single mom that has a issue with an ex. There are laws in place to where we can help them relocate to a safe location. Or if there is someone that is causing an unsafe condition for residents or the community, we have the right to evict them for violation of lease. And so we have a established track record of overseeing our properties and also addressing any sort of potential issues with crime actively with the local police force. And we'd be happy to do so if there were an interest in doing that. Also worth noting that our properties all have interior and exterior security cameras and key fob access systems where we can log who's going in and out of the building. So we have accurate representation of that. Another prevailing, I guess, sentiment in the in the community is that there is not enough market demand for this proposed project, that, you know, there there isn't a need for more rental housing. And while Athens may have a large stock of student housing that happens to be rental, this is a very specific type of rental housing that is tailored to workforce housing. So individuals that are within the community that are currently rent burdened. And so we successfully secured funding for Blackburn Landing, which is down the road off of Blackburn Road, 114 Albany Avenue, last funding round, last is last February funding round. And in doing so, we we have a full comprehensive market study as a part of our application. And again, this is a very limited funding source that is highly desired across the state. It's oversubscribed every single year. And so the state is very selective in where they choose to allocate this funding resource. And if there were not market demand, they would simply not allocate the resource to it. And so going back to our market study that was completed this year for Blackburn Landing, this particular project is in a market, so they look at the, what they call a primary market area. And so they're not looking at the county as a whole. They're looking at the city of Athens. And I provided a map of what they decided what the primary market area was. They look at the city of Athens and then areas of the township surrounding it. So within a few miles of the city of Athens, very close proximity. We're not talking about counties over. Within the primary market area, the entirety of all affordable housing stock is 100% occupied with a waiting list. And that indicates that there's a severe shortage of affordable housing options, this specific type of affordable housing within the community. Furthermore, the market study concluded that market rate housing within the primary market rate area is 97.7% occupied. That's a very high occupancy rate in order to say that there's no demand for the project. But aside from that study, the Ohio Housing Finance Agency, they release housing needs assessments. And the 2025 Appalachian Ohio Housing Needs Assessment identified that 37.7%, so close to 40% of renters in Athens County are severely rent burdened. And what that means is that these people are paying more than 30% of their gross income towards their rent. And so that is exactly what this project is designed to help alleviate. It's designed to help people that are within the community that are struggling. They are paying too much in rent, which makes it difficult for them to save. Maybe they're trying to save for school. Maybe they're trying to save a down payment for a home. The type of people that qualify to live in these projects are people within the community, whether it's a recent college grad from Ohio University that would like to live in the community, but they can't find an affordable place to rent. Oftentimes, starting salaries are within the income limit ranges, and I'm happy to share those. We find a lot of single moms live in our projects, individuals that might be struggling financially. We find that seniors, a lot of seniors choose to reside within our properties because they are built to modern accessibility standards. It's an elevator service building, modern accessibility standards. And seniors on fixed income, maybe social security or a pension, perhaps they get a new assessment on their property tax and can no longer afford to live there. It's an income tax, or it's an income test, not an asset test. So if you own a single family home, but you're on a fixed income, you could qualify to live in this property. And so it's easy to say, oh, there's no need for this property. You know, there's no demand for this type of project. But, you know, objectively, data points to that there is a demand within the community for this property, and we are simply trying to help provide that for people that live here currently. Another concern that I think there was some confusion on, there was some discussion between the two proposed projects. So one concern was that, you know, there's another affordable housing development being proposed in the same census tract, and, you know, we don't, we don't need all of this at once. It's too much at once. And the mayor had alluded to, well, I'm not certain if all of these will get funded or how it works. And so I'm happy to address that specifically. But the state will only fund one project in the county of Athens. And so this census tract in particular is the highest scoring census tract in the state. As I mentioned, this is a competitive funding source that is allocated by what's called a qualified allocation plan, or QAP for short, two year program. And we're in the second year of that. This is the highest scoring census tract in Appalachia, and I can attest that it is competitive because, again, we received an award for Blackburn Landing just down the road. And so there's a strict limitation in the funding guidelines that only one project will get awarded. And so there shouldn't be any concern that two of these projects going in all at once will inundate the the neighborhood with with affordable housing all at once that isn't I would also add that, you know, if both projects are successfully rezoned, same census tract, you know, it's not uncommon for out of state developers to follow us specifically as we've been very successful in securing awards over the years. And we often find that in the second year of a funding cycle, that developers will try to copy our strategy. But should both projects successfully be rezoned, the state will choose the property with the most units specifically. So that is the tiebreaker. So the property with the most units will get selected. And so that kind of leads into another concern rumor that's been circulating that Spire is seeking to knock down single family homes to put up more parking. And that's not the case. So we are focused on rezoning our property, the 8.2 acre parcel to R3 in order to accommodate a 50 plus unit development. We, in sharing information about our proposed project with neighbors, I did inquire to Kathy Pittman, the neighboring property, if she would have an interest in selling, which I believe she she may. But again, we don't have a purchase option in place. We, at this point, we're not doing anything with that property. The only reason that question came up and why it was discussed is because, again, there's an out of state developer that is pursuing a rezone, and we were just trying to be on a level playing field. They will win if they successfully get rezoned because they are trying to annex additional property and put in more units specifically for that tiebreak. That's some of the methodology behind, you know, why that property and additional acreage. I'm speaking in generalities. I don't know for certain. But and while, you know, we feel, you know, for selfish reasons, we feel that our property really is better suited for this use objectively, just the location of it, flatness of it, you know, we won't have any sort of issues creating an accessible route throughout the property, its proximity to public transportation. And while, you know, Hilltide is an experienced developer, and they've hired someone from Ohio that's very experienced three months ago, you know, it's their first deal in Ohio. And we chose not to pursue that site a number of years ago because we felt that wasn't an ideal site for this use. And so with that, you know, I do hope that I've hoped that I've addressed some of the concerns that were brought to light. I'm sure there are many others that subsequent to the meeting have been discussed, and I'm happy to address those. At the end of the day, we are just simply trying to create needs based housing, trying to create housing for people that live in Athens, workforce housing, so that people won't be rent burdened. We feel that our site is ideally situated for this use, and we're not trying to hide anything. We're just trying to create an asset that Spire will be the long term owner of for for years to come. We want to be a part of this community for the foreseeable future, and that is, that's our motive and what we're trying to accomplish. And so with that, I apologize for the verbose comments, but happy to address any further questions or comments that may arise.
Well, first, let me, well, okay. Does anybody here on the commission have any questions? Go ahead.
I have two questions. Number one, estimated monthly rent?
Sure. I'm just going to pull up my model here so that I'm speaking correctly. So to be clear, this property will serve individuals from anywhere from 30% to 80% of the area median income. And so current rents of what we are proposing, and this is after what's called a utility allowance, we, the state, or there are published county limits of the max rent, and then we have to subtract out a utility allowance to account for people paying for their utilities. Spire will cover water, sewer, trash. Residents will cover electricity. That's all they're paying for. But net tenant paid rent for a one bedroom is anywhere from $350 to $815. The two bedrooms are anywhere from $420 to $1150, 1,150. Net tenant paid rent for three bedrooms are anywhere from $480 to $1,300. And speaking with stakeholders in the community, it's my understanding that, and also supported by our market study, but it's not uncommon to see $650 per bedroom. And so we're offering substantial benefit to current market rents. And again, and in order to qualify for these properties, and this speaks again to the crime of, all tenants must undergo a background and income verification process. And so we cannot rent to anyone that will be paying more than 30% of their income towards rent. And so these, you know, they have to qualify for these rent levels specifically, and it's tailored to the individual and how much money they make. If they have an increase in income, it's not as if they get kicked out. That's the whole premise of the program. It's to provide stable, decent housing for individuals to give them a platform to be able to work hard and save. And whether they choose to stay there, we'd love to keep them. We'd love to have good residents. But if they save up and move on outside of the project, then that's that's celebrated as well.
Thank you. Another, I've got two questions. So at the at the risk of doing public math, I think I did this correctly, that it was 30% of their income, that we're talking people ranging between $14,000 per year and $52,000 per year for income.
That's close, yeah.
From lowest to the highest.
Yep. So I can, I can just.
That's fine. You don't have to. Second question I have is, you mentioned the stormwater, the individual that referenced stormwater, I had a citizen call me as well, Mr. Fugate. And he does represent, or works for Wada Cooper, the Kershaw Green project. Quick question for you. Will the Wada Cooper project, will this project compete with the Wada Cooper project? Like from a, in the, in the competition of housing?
Yeah, it's the same product type, same funding source.
So a competitor complained about the storm, stormwater issue specifically. Gotcha.
Correct.
All right. That's all I have.
I also, if I may, share also, just in regard to the competitive situation. So, you know, as part of the market study for income qualified individuals, I want to get the correct number here. There are, so in 2026, they take census data, they apply statistical projections and population increases. Or in 2026, there will be 4,507 income eligible renter households within this primary market area. So again, that's the city of Athens with a couple mile buffer. So over 4,500 income rent, income eligible renter households are in the area. And so even with Kershaw Green, even with our Blackburn Landing, all existing affordable housing, I mean, if if this project specifically 50 additional units were to get funded, market penetration rates, so the number of affordable housing units to people that qualify to live in them, we're talking about 7.8% of people. So that there's a, there's a need for this housing.
Mr. Phillips?
Yeah, just to speak to the traffic, I will say when Kershaw Green went in, they did a traffic study in the University of State's neighborhood, was extremely worried about the increased traffic. And there has not yet to be a problem. I mean, that was 200 units, and we were very concerned that we would need a stoplight or something to get onto the road. And I know we have others here that could attest to that, but it has served to not be as concerning as we thought it would be. So I just want to say that.
I don't wish to downplay the concern by any means. I can understand the concern. But again, at the end of the day, as owners of these projects, we bear the risk for, should something happen. And if it's somewhere that is too much traffic and it's unsafe, people won't want to live there. And then we're in a big, we're in a big bind. And so we feel very strongly that, you know, it's it's an ideal use for this site, and we won't be causing an unsafe increase in traffic.
Thank you. Do either Ms. Jennings or Mr. Riggs, you have anything to add at this point before I open it up to public comment?
No.
Okay. So I want to reiterate, there's a sign up sheet going around. I'd like to make sure everybody gets signed up on that sheet. And I'll take in, you may sit down.
Okay.
Okay. I'll take, please, one at a time, come up. And I'd, you know, I hope that what what'll happen here is rather than repeat things, we'll focus on new comments, new concerns, whatever that might be, as as we make these comments. And please state your name and your address for the record.
Yes, my name is Sylvie Spielness. And for anybody who heard W O U B, it's not Sauvage, just saying. Just trying to clarify that, sorry. So I live in University of State's Boulevard, so I have that perspective. I'm also on city council. I'm also the chair of the Affordable Housing Commission. So I'm quite interested, and to clarify, the Affordable Housing Commission does not focus only on low income housing, but it is certainly within our purview. So I've been very interested in these projects and the whole process. So I came up with several studies to address some of the same concerns that he's he put forward. And to add to that just a little bit, first of all, Kershaw Green, I talked to them yesterday. They have 191 units, thereabout, 100% capacity as of yesterday. They're just finalizing a few contracts, 100 people on the waiting list. I also spoke with the Zach Dye, who is the director of the Athens County Metropolitan Housing Authority. Their waiting list for public housing is 202 people. Their waiting list for choice vouchers is 622 people. That doesn't include veterans and other special categories. It takes them about a year for people on about 100 people in a year to get housing. So we're talking years out. We really need housing, period. And also to reiterate somewhat what he said, according to according to the Affordable Housing Alliance of Central Ohio, the about 22.3% of Appalachian renters were severely cost burdened, spending at least half their household income on rent. Also, for every 100 extremely low-income renters in rural Ohio, there were 45 rental units affordable and available to them in 2021. So that gives you just an idea. Also, there was some concern, although not directly said, about how this might affect people's property values. I checked with the auditor's office. There has been no change at all to the negative about the University Estates housing values. And in fact, in the last 12 months throughout Athens City, it has gone up 9.2% as of November of this year. So clearly, we don't have an issue with that. However, the median sold prices in Athens City for this year was $334,500. Also, the average median, the average price of rent is 940, or rent and whatever, is $945, which is much higher than the other Appalachian counties. So that is a concern. But I also wanted to say that this is going to be 50 units. And I'm going to say honestly, I'd be happy if you approved the change for both these projects, because I think we really need them that badly. But I certainly, in my perspective, I think that this one is better because of the location, because it is so convenient to Richland, and the businesses there, and it's so close to other businesses, the veterinarians across the street, Procos has apartments nearby. It seems to me that this, it makes sense as a project. And I think being 50 units seems convenient. But again, I'd be happy if both of them could happen at some point. But as far as priorities, my priority, I think, is this one that we're speaking about on Pomeroy Road at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Andrew Gudirelli. I live at 191 West Washington Street in Athens. Similarly to Sylvie's concerns, I would like to share, actually, I'll give an example of myself, what I went through trying to find an apartment here in August. So I moved out of my previous place last spring. The lease ended in May. I kind of crashed with my mom back in Pennsylvania for a couple of months, and then needed a place back in August. As I worked for the university, I needed to be back by fall semester. It was extremely hard to find housing. I had to go on Facebook Marketplace. I had to go on Reddit. I had to go on everywhere to try to find a place. Finally, found a grad student who was willing to sublease her place on the west side, on West Washington Street for me. And it's a small apartment, but it's enough to get the job done. I was able to find that. Actually, when I was in Europe, I was still trying to find it while I was taking a trip with my siblings. So while we were touring castles in Ireland and stuff, I was texting people in Athens to try to find a place. So there is desperately a need for housing in Athens, way more than 50 units long-term, to be honest. I think another thing that I can speak to is the growing homeless crisis in Athens, which I've spoken to city council to about before. There was an encampment on West Washington Street about 200 yards from my house. It was three women and a dog that were living in tents. As we know, it is shown around the country and around the world that one of the biggest factors that increases the rate of homelessness in a city is housing supply. It's obviously much more complicated than that. You deal with drug addiction, all different issues. But increasing housing supply does have a correlation with homelessness. So I think that building this project would help alleviate those concerns in Athens. That being said, I do have some concerns given the location of the project. While it is on paper accessible to a bus stop, the driveway, which would come down on Pomeroy Road, would go out to a part of Pomeroy, Pomeroy that does not have sidewalks. You would then have to walk past the paint shop and the new dispensary where the Marathon Gas Station is, cross a street that has no sidewalks, no crosswalks, and is basically a highway exit for people coming off 5033 from the west. And when those lights are green, people go way faster than the 25 miles an hour. So if someone who doesn't have a car is going to try to get down there for the bus stop and they are crossing, I worry greatly about the chance that somebody gets hit by a car that may be traveling 40, 50 miles an hour. So unfortunately, I think what's probably going to happen, unless there's also major changes to that intersection into that area, is that this becomes just another apartment complex with a giant parking lot that increases car dependency in the city of Athens. And I know we pride ourselves on trying to be a walkable city, but if this is not done right, this is only going to increase car dependency. It's going to increase the burden of parking uptown when we should be focusing on transit and walkability throughout our city. And that's kind of the main concern I have with the project. You know, I know there's been some talks with members of council about trying to kind of make Richland more of a street instead of a road. And I think that if this goes in, if this project does get approved, that only becomes even more of a necessity to try to actually densify that area and make it into like a proper city street that people can walk to and access transit in a safe manner. Because if that doesn't happen, then, I mean, having lived in this city for nine years as a student and now as an employee at the university, like, there's places that I, I won't walk to because I don't feel safe doing it. There's places, I'll just get in my car and drive because I'm not going to put myself in danger if I don't have to. So, yeah, I have a few thoughts on the Hoover Street development, but as we're not talking about that, I will speak to that later.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
We've talked about us.
Name and address, please.
My name is Chris McCollough. I'm on, live on 25 Pomeroy Road. So this project's going to be in my backyard. But you know what? I decided to take a different take on it, a different attack, not talk about us, but talk about them, the people that are going to be living in that house. It was mentioned that there were some stores on Richland Avenue. There's not one grocery store. There's not one Walmart. Now, if you want beer and gummies, you can get them. They're right there really close. But I am concerned about their needs. Why wouldn't the east end where all these stores are? We're talking about, maybe if you're in low-income housing, you may not have a car. You may need to walk or ride a bicycle. That, that place, 25 Pomeroy Road, doesn't lend itself well to either of those. And they're, and where are you, what are you going to get for groceries on Richland Avenue? Like I said, there's a Pete's across the road, gets chips and beer. And basically, that's, I just wanted to come from a different attack. What about their needs? Let's consider what their needs are, not our needs, or not some management place's needs. They need someplace where they can get out and walk safely. They need someplace where they can get to a store. And that's about all I'm going to say. I just wanted to agree with what the young man said. I think you did a good job.
Appreciate it, Chris. Anyone else?
Hi, my name's Andy Vogt. I live outside the city, but my concern is for my business property at 375 Richland Avenue. Before I get started, I want to one thank Director Stone as well as my councilman, Jeff Reiser, for any time I've come to them with the issues with Coates Run, they've been extremely accessible. So that being said, I, I do want them to be recognized. I have a lot of concerns. I know this gentleman has mentioned how they will create lagoons and stuff like that, but when we take an eight-acre piece of property that absorbs water, and we create parking lots, and then we funnel it, yes, there might be lagoons and stuff like that, but when we get water, it's going to be bad. I did present a couple pictures that, here's one of them. So the Summit of Coates Run, or Summit of Coates Run, this is the bridge on Richland Avenue. You can see Stop and Cuff Carry Out in the background. You can see this, right here is the opening where, and I don't know the whole watershed of Coates Run, but I would assume it's high hundreds to maybe thousands of acres. I mean, we're talking Longview Heights. We're probably talking about Morrison Brown Hill, all the way up to Pleasanton or Pleasant, whatever road, and Blackburn Road. So there is a ton of water coming down this tribute, to this creek. And the next picture, if you don't mind, please. So this is on the other side of that bridge that I showed into the new bridge on Richland Avenue. And you can see how filled that is with sediment. Mr. Stone and I have worked, we've talked a lot with, we've even communicated with the Army Corps of Engineers. However, we're waiting on a study. My concern is, it's not a matter of if, but when we have incredible flooding. We've already had some. My neighbor who owns Purple Chopsticks have had major issues with flooding. Luckily, my building's up a little bit higher than hers, but this is of great concern. I do believe before either one of these projects were to be properly okayed, that these issues, because this is probably 500 yards from where Coates Run empties into the Hocking River, that we have a severe bottleneck. I don't believe that the previous picture that was shown, that the engineer did a very good job. I, I mean, I just can't see where thousands of acres or hundreds of acres, emptying into a major creek, can be bottlenecked like that. And that's where it's bottlenecked before. I have videos. I can share them with you at another time. But this is a great concern to me and to many of the other businesses on Richland Avenue. Do you have any questions for me?
Mr. Stone?
Andy, if there's a sediment removal product, project for Coates Run that addresses spots like, like you showed, would then rezoning the site on Pomeroy Road be appropriate since we're talking about rezoning?
I, I can't say, I couldn't say no to that. I mean, something definitely needs done, and, you know, I, I don't care too much about either project. I just care about my building, my neighbors' buildings, and, you know, what we dealt with thus far. I think the case has been made for some of this housing and its needs with Sylvie. And, you know, I really don't care too much about either one, but the, the care I have is funneling all this water from these parking lots, whether it be two different locations. And I know failsafes will be put in place, but failsafes fail. And that's just my main concern. So, all right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Alan Swank, 40 Townsend Place, also a member of city council, like my colleague back here, colleague over there. My question is more about the future. I've talked extensively with both representatives from both projects, and it's been made very clear, and I think we all acknowledge, that only one of these can possibly be awarded. Here's my question. I don't know if this is something you can answer if I have to ask Director Riggs. Let's assume today that it's recognized that housing is needed in this community, and the recommendation from this board, the city council, is to rezon these properties. And let's say that it gets to city council, and city council's a group of seven decides, yeah, let's rezon them. And we rezon them from R1 to R3, or R1 and R2 to R3. Only one of these is going to get awarded. What happens in the future to the other property? Over on East State Street, we used to have a good business in a B3 zone. And when that business went out, the future got ugly, and we have a real eyesore over there. So my question is simply this: if you approve both of these to be rezoned, and council does the same, and one of them doesn't get awarded, what is the process for rezoning these back to R1, to returning them to the state they are now? And can that be done?
I, I don't know. I, I for one believe that as a community, we need more R3 available land. And what I'm hoping as a planning commission is that we look at both of these sites and decide whether they're appropriate for R3, knowing that only one would be a, one, maybe only one would be approved. I don't think, if we approve and recommend to city council, and city council approves it, I'm hoping that we will find some other way to provide more housing at an affordable rate in the community on, on the site that maybe wasn't used. I don't, I personally don't see zoning it back necessarily as a good option, but that's just me personally as a member of this commission.
And I guess that's the concern I have, John, is because I've reviewed both of these developers' properties, looked at them extensively, and they're good actors, both of them. But only one of these good actors is going to get a role. But there are a lot of bad actors out there. And by that property being zoned R3 in perpetuity, we could get one of those bad actors, like we have a bad actor over on East State Street in the B3 zone. So that's my concern. What comes next when one of these doesn't get granted the right to put up affordable housing in that area if we're stuck with R3 forever? So I guess, is there a, I guess the question is, whether we agree with it or not, is there a process to rezon back to something?
Yeah, and I, and I, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Riggs here. But I know there has been discussion, and, and also Ms. Jennings, to really look at the, to really look at the community zoning and see if there's things that need to be holistically looked at. You know, when I look, when I look at the zoning map, I look at the amount of R3 property available in the community. Almost all of it is on university land. You know, there's, there is not identified sites right now. And I'm hoping, you know, this is a process to look at two sites, but I'm hoping down the road, as a community, the community looks at it holistically, and was able, you know, and through the, through our planner and, and through the process, and identify places where these can go. And then I hope that as, as a, you know, as, as kind of the building police force, that our community will, you know, make sure that they're done well. That's just my, my thoughts. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Riggs.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Megan and I, city planner and I, have looked at this corridor, and basically because we've been seeing from the Board of Zoning Appeals, significant number of variance requests in this area. And that tends to mean that, that the properties or the areas are not zoned correctly. If you recall, we talked about this a month or so ago, when Pomeroy Road was the main thoroughfare into the city from the, from the east, coming into the city. That's no longer the case. It's no longer a major corridor. And it, it would, would suggest that that whole corridor would need to be reviewed, reevaluated, and, and look at maybe modifying some of the zoning. So that's something we're, we're in the process of, of doing right now. We're looking at that, and we'll be making some recommendations for, for that whole corridor, not, not just the, these two pieces that we're talking about at R3, but something more comprehensive for the community to, to make it better match the feel for that community, for that area, that community.
So I guess I'll ask the question again. Once something is zoned from R1 to R3, can it be rezoned back to R1?
So what I was trying to say was that we're going to look at that again, and, and that whole area may need to be rezoned. So maybe R1's not the best zone for that. And yeah, we'll look.
But it, but it could be, it could be rezoned back to R1 again.
Thank you. That's, that's all I wanted to hear.
Right. Well, and then council would have to approve it. Right.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that that could be done.
Right. Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Well, we don't, I don't think we have a rule that you can't speak twice, but, and we have somebody in, in the back that would like to speak. Let's do that first.
I'm Aaron Leatherwood. I live in the city on Coventry Lane, fairly close to this proposed development. Shortly, so this proposal for rezoning had previously been sent to council, and when it was previously sent to council, council had the law director review the application, and the law director determined that the owner had not signed the rezoning request, and therefore, that Spire Development did not have standing to submit that request. That request, although they used the, the language "return to the planning commission", it was in fact rejected. There's no provision in the city code to, to return it. It's either accepted or it's, or it's not. Spire Development then resubmitted the application. Spire Development then resubmitted the application, and when Spire Development resubmitted the application, it was, it was again, this time it was signed by Spire Development. In fact, it was the same application. It was signed by Spire Development, and below Spire Development, Craig Kennedy had signed it. Craig Kennedy is also not the owner of the property. I had sent a, I just found this out late last night. I wrote up a petition this morning and emailed it to you just in advance of this meeting. I apologize for the short notice. I just found out that this was on the Planning Commission's agenda on Monday, and I've had very short notice to review this myself. But it's fairly clear that, again, we lack a situation where Spire Development has standing to submit anything or any request. So I would respectfully request that the Planning Commission rule on that and determine if this again needs to be submitted by the owner. This sounds pedantic. I get that this sounds pedantic. I'll put this in perspective. My mom has a rental property that I manage for her. I have a power of attorney that authorizes me to rent it for her. When I rent to a tenant, I show them that I have a power of attorney stating that I'm authorized to rent this property for her. It's a real concern, or should be a real concern for my tenants. I once got a call at work from a person saying, hey, I'm standing outside your rental property. Where's the key? And in fact, the issue was, it was an international student who had been scammed, gotten to pay a deposit. They'd shown up on the doorstep of this place expecting me to meet them there and give them a key. I referred them to the Athens Police Department. But it caused me to put a lot of thought into, okay, well, how do we authorize these things? Of course, the city of Athens has had authorization problems recently as well. Spire is a large company. This should not be hard. And I think this is the kind of thing that we need to take seriously. I certainly take it seriously. I would like to see the same respect for process from Spire. I sent the petition, the email. I also have a paper copy here for you.
I mean, I don't know what, I'm assuming that the reason it came back is there had been determined by the city that we have standing. Is that not true?
So this went, opinion from the law director that the signature on the application was not appropriate. Spire came back with a modified application that we sent to the law director's office, and we didn't get any comments back from that, that as it was not appropriate.
That doesn't mean it is appropriate.
But do we know, do we have a yes or no?
We don't.
Yes.
Do you know the owner of the property?
I do not personally know the owner of the property.
Do you know Craig Kennedy?
I do not personally know any of the people involved in this. I don't think they've lived in Athens for a very, very, very long time. What I did do is I went to the Recorder's website, and you have a copy there of that in that packet there. And on the Recorder's website, it lists Joanne Kennedy trustee as the owner of the property. So I would expect that the purchase contract would have been signed by Joanne Kennedy trustee. It was not signed by Joanne Kennedy trustee. It was signed by Craig Kennedy and Kevin Kennedy. There is a provision within the Ohio Revised Code for a trustee to delegate or to certify the existence of co-trustees who can sign these things. There is no certification of co-trustee. There's no chain there. Like, Joanne Kennedy can sign this. Joanne Kennedy has a way that she can delegate other people to sign it. None of that has been done.
Do you believe that perhaps she doesn't want to have it zoned?
I believe that you see.
And there's a risk that this is a fraudulent attempt to have the property rezoned?
I believe that you see reports in the media more often than I'd like about families fighting over properties that have been through an inheritance and asserting various rights that they may or may not have. The fact that we're dealing with very sophisticated actors here, Craig Kennedy identifies himself as the investment trustee. Spire Development is a large developer. This is not their first rodeo. The fact that it is missing should be a red flag. This is, this is very basic stuff. Again, I managed to get this straight on a little tiny, tiny house that I ran out for my mom. I don't understand why this would be a problem for them.
Please do. Yes.
If it's okay, can I speak just a little bit further to some of the other issues associated with the project, and then I'll step down and revert to Mr. McNichols? So I would reiterate the comments made previously in other venues about the need for a water study of the region. I think the city is aware that there are issues here. I think that's why the city has requested that the Corps of Engineers look at this. I would reiterate the desire to have the Corps of Engineers weigh in on the water and drainage issues. Mr. McNichols, and he might address this as well, but there is a, there is a qualified allocation, a QAP thing, right, that identifies various census tracts as having a higher priority, some more than others. It may well be that the census tract has the highest score in the state, but that's not really relevant. What's relevant is there are five census tracts around Athens, all of which have very high scores. Herschaw Green is located in one of them. The projects approved for the Plains are located in a second one. The one approved at Blackburn Landing, of course, is in this census tract. There are two census tracts on the Near East Side. Neither of those census tracts have had projects proposed for them, and as someone else stated in the meeting, the Near East Side would be a far better location for this kind of activity, given its proximity to shopping, direct center of the library, all of those amenities. I do believe that the Council and the city would be well-served by taking a more comprehensive view of what we want. We talk about this thing getting approved, or Hooper getting approved. The reality is, and I'm a little rusty on this, but as near as I can tell, one of the, one of the award criteria is, have you, have we done anything for you lately? So it's not just, isn't this or Hooper? It's also, if we do something this year, we may well be ineligible next year. What do we want as a city? This is important. We have a 2040 comprehensive plan. The application that you have in front of you incorrectly states that the property is located within the areas bounded by Blackburn Road and Richland Avenue. It is not. I think before we start turning the comprehensive plan on its head, we need to look at this again more comprehensively. I could go on at some length. I feel a little bit overwhelmed by this process. I know I've had a week or two. Everyone else has had months on this. I'm still very much getting up to speed. But thank you for your time, your consideration, and I will provide more comments later.
I'd just like to speak briefly on the issue of ownership for the property. So Craig Kennedy is the trustee for the holding trust. He did sign the zoning application. He also submitted a letter stating that we were acting on, as agent, on behalf of the trust. So the zoning application has, you know, a signature line for owner slash agent. I signed it because our contract states clearly that purchaser, Spire Development, must apply for rezoning prior to December, whatever the date is. So clearly states that we should be the one applying for it. He is also the person that enacted that purchase agreement, because he is the authorized person to do so. But regardless, you know, it appears to me that's a thinly veiled attempt just to shoot this down for reasons unrelated to the use of the property. The fact is, and it's even on this petition, that, you know, amendments to the zoning code may be initiated one of the following ways: A, by adoption by, of a motion by the commission; B, by adoption of a resolution by City Council; and then C, by filing an application. And so I just encourage you that if you feel that this is a good use for this property, and you think that this would be a good project for the welfare of the city of Athens, that, you know, the Planning Commission has the ability to, you know, adopt a motion to rezon this and send it to City Council for their consideration as well. But again, you know, he is, he is, as the authorized person to sign, or the authorized person to speak on behalf of the trust, he has signed the application and also submitted a letter assigning Spire Development as agent for this rezoning. So that's all I'd like to add on that.
Go ahead.
Well, I just, yeah, a couple of questions about the documents. So if I'm hearing right, we don't have a yea or nay from the law director, although you're saying no comment means no problem, but I would always prefer something in writing. I guess the other thing is, is do we have any kind of document that says we have Craig Kennedy's signature? Yes, and I'm not a lawyer, but do we have any kind of document that says?
Your application?
I'm on that.
Yeah, it's, it's that letter that's from, signed by Craig Kennedy.
But do we have any contact with, but Joan is the person that's listed on the property taxes?
Yeah, I don't know if that's correct or not.
Joanne. Thank you.
The name is on the plat book map.
And the plat book map. So do we have any kind of document that says, in a trust form, that both of these people have signed as trustees? I mean, we're taking Craig Kennedy's word. I mean, I'm not meaning to doubt yours, that you have the signature from them, and there seems to be a gap.
What's the pleasure of the commission here? We've, you know, this is on the agenda. Do we table it until we get feedback from the law director? Or do we proceed? And if the law director says, no, there's still no standing, it, you know, it basically dissolved? What's our, what do we do here? What's the pleasure?
Could move forward. I'm just, you know, options, and I think, you know, the commission can make a decision on its own, irrespective of the, of the, of the landowner, to recommend zoning, a change of zoning to the council. Or, you know, we could make an assumption that, that Craig and the other, the other signer, Kevin, who signed the purchase contract that's included in the back, that are indeed speaking on behalf of, and have authority to do this.
I think, I think the idea of just going ahead and approving or recommending to City Council that as a community, we would support rezoning of this parcel from R1 to R3. I think that's, I do believe personally, having spent a couple of meetings talking about that particular site, that I, you know, aside, I don't, I don't, I am concerned about the, you know, traffic. I am concerned about the stormwater and all of that, that, you know, and all, in my mind, all of that needs to be resolved, and all of that will be, time will be spent down the road if a project proceeds on that site. But I am one who thinks that it's a good site for R3 or multifamily housing in this community, and that there's a need for that.
I will share my views now, so that you'll know why I'm voting the way I'm voting when we do, if we, if a motion proceeds. I too absolutely believe, in fact, I was president of City Council when the Affordable Housing Commission was created, and worked on the initial study, as did, as did Director Stone and other council members. But I have concerns, just because I've watched for 30 years the flooding that's happened to Richland Avenue, with always this, we're going to address it, we're going to look at it, no, we're going to put a highway bypass in that's going to create more acreage, that's going to drain more onto Richland Avenue. And we are so close to getting some information from the Army Corps of Engineers. I know it's not a funding answer, Andy, that, and you've probably seen me in the yellow vest on old Pomeroy Road. I walk it twice a week, and I look at the pedestrian issues there. And I know we've talked about a larger plan for rezoning that makes more sense for our community. And I just think that those kind of things, we can say, well, but, well, but, well, but, and prove it, and then it's approved, and then we have more flooding and somebody at danger when they try and cross the intersection. So I would not be, at this point, given all of those parameters, I would not be in favor.
Anybody else in the commission have some comments? I ask if we have a motion to do something here?
No, I mean, as part of the city planner, we've talked at length about having a business zone to an R3, to an R1, and not just going from a business zone to an R1. And I think both of these properties have apartments next to them already, and this would align with the city plan. To reiterate that if this is approved for R3, then there'd be Title 41, where we can really dig in to water and traffic and all of those kinds of things. So this wouldn't be the end of the road. This would just be rezoning, and then there would be significant conversations about problems that would occur if building were to start. So, yeah, those are my thoughts.
Anything else? So maybe, what do, what do the council members think about us forwarding a, a recommendation to rezone based on, based on the fact that this appears to be a good site for that particular work? You know, would the council, I don't know, does anybody have any thoughts about that before we proceed this?
I do. I would say that as council members right now, with a potential agenda item coming forward, you can't speak on behalf of this.
Can't.
Because to indicate so, would indicate how you might potentially vote, you can offer a personal opinion as a citizen, but that's just a, an aside. See your own person.
I'll take the personal.
We figured.
This is hard to say, but in light of the city, no, in light of the citizens of this city, paying out $722,000. And I believe most people are honest. I believe most people wake up in the morning and say, I want to do good today. I think I have this, I don't think, I know I have the concerns that former President Nisley has, that we need conclusive legal opinion that this document has been correctly filled out. And once we get that, and I think you, I would say it, move forward and vote on if this is an appropriate thing, but until we get that I dotted and that T crossed, sadly, there are bad actors. And I'm not implying in this case there are, but someone said it very clearly, families sometimes do strange things when money's involved. As a citizen, not as a City Council person, I would like, and it'd be very easy to do, to get a notarized or whatever the legal terms are, the opinion of the law director, that this is indeed a document with which you can proceed. I think without that, we're getting the cart before the horse.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion here for us to do something.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that as a member of the planning commission, I recommend, or we recommend, irrespective of the desire of the owner, that this parcel be rezoned from R1 to R3.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
That, any other comment before I take, ask for a vote?
Did you, were you going to make a comment?
No. No, I, we're done with the public comment at this point, sir. So with that, all in favor of the motion that's on the table, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And against?
Aye.
Aye. So it passes three to one, that this, that city, that the planning commission recommend to City Council that they rezon this particular parcel into, to R3, irrespective of whether or not the, the developer, Spire Development, proceeds with, with the project any further. Okay. Thank you. Okay. The, we got one more case.
Okay, we got one more case. And that is the, thank you. That's the Hill Tide case. It's case 24-10 in the rezoning of 111 Hooper Street.
Just going to give it one second here for our IT folks to get this PowerPoint presented, so I can proceed. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission. My name is Taylor Cook. I'm a development officer with Hill Tide Partners. We are the 22nd largest affordable housing developer in the country by starts. I'm also here with David Mott of MGSS Law, who we've engaged for legal assistance. And so if there are any legal questions that I can't answer myself, because I am definitely not a lawyer, I will defer to David on those. As you know, I presented our proposed rezoning of eight parcels totaling 5.13 acres located at 111 Hooper Street as a communication before this body two weeks ago on December 4th. As a quick summary, we are proposing to rezone eight parcels from a mix of R1 and R2 to R3, which will allow us to pursue multifamily affordable rental housing. Assuming we receive a positive recommendation from you today, as well as approval from the, of the rezoning ordinance from the city council at a later date, we plan on applying for 9% housing tax credits from the Ohio Housing Finance Agency, or OFA for short. And that would be in February 2025. And that would help us to construct somewhere between 50 and 80 units of affordable rental housing. And that would serve residents between 30 and 70% of the area median income. We would hear back in May 2025 as to whether our application to OFA would be successful. So just to back up a little bit, as you can see on the current zoning map, the eight parcels that we are looking at here are currently zoned a mix of R1 and R2. We are surrounded on the north by R3 and R2 to the south, with R1 to the west. And as I mentioned, our proposal is 50 to 80 affordable rental units in two residential buildings with a separate community building that would have onsite management staff member, community room, community kitchen. We are also proposing that any acreage that we have that is in addition to what's necessary to construct these two residential buildings could be used for single-family housing development. And we have talked extensively with community members, city staff, about ways in which we could pursue single-family housing. Obviously, single-family housing development without any additional incentives is going to be expensive, single-family development. In order to bring the cost down, you know, one thing that we can certainly do is offer land at a steep discount or donate that land to lower the land costs, overall development costs of doing single-family. On top of that, we commit to pursuing other types of incentives, like the single-family tax credit, to try and develop single-family on this site in tandem with multifamily housing. Just like members of city council and the planning commission, we believe that there needs to be a mix of housing options, pursue housing of all different types in order to address the housing shortage that's in Athens. So I thought it would be helpful today to just kind of back up a little bit and tell you how we arrived at this rezoning request, why we are here today. There's been a little bit of discussion about a qualified allocation plan, about some other projects that have been presented before you in the past. So just to back up, so we're a nationwide affordable housing developer. We do this all over the country. And in Ohio specifically, back in September, the OFA board approved a 2025 9% housing tax credit qualified allocation plan. And as part of that plan, it identifies, or has competitive criteria and incentivizes developments in certain census tracts. So two very specific criteria that they have are what's called the discount-to-market rent. So for tax credit housing, you have income limits and rent limits that are set at the county level. Within that county, you have many different housing markets. If you think about Athens County, you know, the city of Athens is very different from a lot of the rest of the county. And so when it's looking at discount-to-market rent, this criteria looks at the difference between what are the market rates? What's the market rate rent in that area? And then what's the tax credit rent? Because in some parts of Athens County, and this is the same in many other counties, the housing tax credit rents are actually about the same, or they might even be a little bit higher than what the market is. So this incentivizes development where it's going to produce the most affordability. And the most affordability is in the census tract 9733. That's why the state identified this census tract. And there are hundreds of others across the state that also score very well. But there's an appellation set aside, two projects that are general occupancy, meaning non-senior, will get funded in this upcoming round in February. So just like every other developer, we look at these criteria and we try and figure out where are the sites going to score the best? Because even if we wanted to, and even if we could find a really good site outside of one of these census tracts, it doesn't have a chance of getting funded. So this is the census tract that is, that is the highest scoring in Athens County. And as I mentioned, this is census tract 9733. So we start by looking at this census tract. And obviously, when you're outside of the township, it is difficult or impossible to get access to city sewer and water. So we take that census tract, limit it down to the portion of it that is within city limits. Then we apply parcel identification data. So we can see, okay, out of all of this area, what are the parcels that would be available if there was a seller? And then from there, we look at, well, of those parcels then, which parcels are large enough to sustain the type of development that we're proposing? So we're talking about a census tract that's within the city, parcels that can work for what we're looking at, and then you have to find available sellers. So, you know, we're no different. We contacted these same sites, the owners of these sites. Not necessarily, not necessarily all of these, because some of them are just not really good for development. And that's how we arrived at our current site, which is on 111 Hooper Street. So the reason that we landed on this site specifically is because this is the only site that is, if you look back at the zoning map, that is within this area that's going to score well. So it has a chance of getting funded, which means you have a high chance of actually bringing affordable rental units to life in this area. So it's the only one that is within that census tract and is adjacent to existing R3. So we did not want to bring forward a proposal where it was a brand-new use to a neighborhood. There's already an existing apartment complex right across the street called Monticello Village. It's a 68-unit affordable rental property, not affordable, it is a market-rate rental property. It was constructed in the 60s. And so this would be just adjacent to our site. And that's one of the reasons why we thought that this was one of the better sites within this census tract for bringing affordable rental development. So on top of that, we also believe that this rezoning to R3 will further the Athens 2040 comprehensive plan, which calls for, and I'm quoting here, "more and denser housing options within the city's south side neighborhood, as well as housing that serves below median income residents, incorporates universal design standards, and applies sustainable design standards." We checked the box on all of those requirements out of that comprehensive plan. And then two other points that I wanted to mention today before I conclude. So yesterday, I held a public meeting at the Athens Public Library to discuss our proposed rezoning ordinance with nearby neighbors. So last week, I sent out a mailer to every adjacent property owner that was identified in our rezoning application, as well as folks that were nearby to those. So I invited folks who were even outside of the city limits in Athens Township, folks down on Nottingham who are not adjacent. I invited members of the planning commission, as well as city council. We really wanted to ensure that we're listening to folks, integrating ideas into our design, and getting stakeholders involved early in the process to demonstrate our commitment to the neighborhood. And I can commit to you that this is not the first public meeting that we will hold. If this moves forward to city council, I will commit to doing another public meeting, and we will identify same folks within the nearby area, involve city council, the planning commission, so that everybody knows where we are in the process, what we're proposing, and what the status is. Secondly, we have heard some concern about the distance between our site and the nearest public transit stop. So while we are about a 3/4 of a mile or 14-minute walk to the nearest bus stop, which is located at Hooper and Richland, HAPCAP has reached out to us and is looking to work together on this project. So we're hoping that through that partnership, we can bring a bus stop to this area if this project is successful. So not only would that benefit potential residents at our proposed property, but it would also benefit all of the residents who are living there currently off of Hooper Street and at Monticello Village. So that concludes my remarks today. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I have a process question. So if both projects get rezoned properly, does Title 41 have to pass before the state decides which project? Or is just getting the zoning enough?
So we need to have, yeah. And any project that is being submitted to the agency for these credits has to have what's called a zoning verification letter, just stating that the proposed use complies with the current zoning. So that's the one piece that we need prior to, or on, hopefully prior to the February 27th, 2025 deadline.
Okay. And what was your feedback from the library?
So we had a couple of members of city council, the planning commission were there. We only had one resident in the neighborhood off of Nottingham that was there. I tried my best to market this as best as I could. So I bothered Megan quite a bit to try and get the word out. I had a conversation with a staff member at W O U B to try and, again, market this as well as we could. So we'll continue doing this and hopefully hear from more nearby property owners, get their feedback, and keep them informed of the process.
My sense of the individual that was there from the community was of encouragement because of the lack of housing, that he had spent some time in this community and had difficulty finding places that were affordable to live. And he's a young, I think, I think he's a faculty, he may be a researcher, somebody at the university though, and a young individual at the university. I, you know, he seemed encouraging and he felt, felt positive, I thought, about what was discussed. Anybody else here with a question at this point? Thank you.
I have a comment specific to this site. So I recognize, Mr. Chairman, that, you know, today we're just talking about zoning and appropriateness of zoning. But that at some point in the future, we're going to have a Title 41 review, where we're looking at site plan and we're looking at the engineering issues. And this body will vote again on approval of a Title 41 project. I know we're not talking about engineering today, but I've practiced engineering in this city for 21 years. This is a much harder site to develop than the site on Pomeroy Road for that. And three years ago, I sat across from an engineer who was working for Wada Cooper on the Kershaw Green project, and they told me why they couldn't support building a sidewalk connection. And instead, they just wanted to give the city money for the city to build a sidewalk connection. And so I'm just making a statement today that when we come to Title 41, say you're successful, and Spire is not. Because you get the zoning approved, and, or maybe one gets approved and one doesn't, whatever the state decides. You know, I will tell all my peers here that if you can't make this site work for engineering, we're not going to do it halfway, right? So, you know, you got to look at water lines, you got to look at sewer lines, you got to look at connection to the infrastructure. And so just because you get funded, which is a step, right, to get funded, if you're the one that's successful, and you might not be, this body might not approve that Title 41 if the engineering is done halfway. And I just want to make that statement, I guess, because I'm more concerned about this location than the other one when it comes to how it connects with the infrastructure of the city. So that's all.
Sure. And actually, right after this, I will be going to the site myself. We have an engineer and environmental folks going out. And I'm going to walk it with them for the rest of the afternoon.
I hope you give them the water line and sewer line maps I gave you, because that's as much of a concern as the sidewalk issue. Thank you.
Ms. Jennings or Mr. Riggs, do you have anything to add here at this point? Before I open it up to? Okay.
Sorry, I have a process question again. So if your site is selected by the state, but Title 41 fails, then does it go back to the state? And then is the other property potentially, or is it just lost to the city of Athens? What is the?
Yeah, so if there are, this has happened, I would say, on rare occasions, that if a developer is a recipient of a 9% tax credit award, those tax credits, so for whatever reason, they can't move forward. Those tax credits would be returned to the state. The state gets to add what was the amount of those return credits to the following year's allocation. And then they can, you know, it'll be next year, that would be the next round for 9% housing tax credits. That being said, this is, you know, the reason that I'm here, there is a window of opportunity for these items. I would have loved to have had more time to, you know, look at other sites, you know, bring something a little bit slower through the process. But the state approved this back in September. We got under contract within a month and one week, and then immediately turned a application for zone change and have been following the process as quickly as we can while trying to engage as many folks as we possibly can throughout the process. So it is, it's a short window to try and access these resources. But yes, if for whatever reason we wouldn't be able to move forward, those credits would be returned.
And as a follow-up to Mr. Phillips' comment, that then the community potentially would lose those tax credits, this community, even though it's rated high now. But, but there's no guarantee that another project would happen in this community in the following year or whatever.
Correct. So each plan, so every state has one of these housing credit agencies. They determine how often they want to run these rounds, but they get an annual allocation of housing credits. So most do this on an annual basis. And usually, each year, it changes. So the areas that could, you know, be successful this year are likely not going to be the same areas that are successful next year. But then again, who knows? One thing I would definitely recommend is, in quarter one of 2025, the state will be seeking input on their plan and to certainly get involved, because local jurisdictions can have an impact on what areas are incentivized, what you all want to look for going forward. So I would also encourage you just to talk with the agency, submit comments, so that you can see some of your own ideas integrated into their statewide plan.
So is there anybody in the, in the audience that would like to speak to this particular project? Again, name and address.
Oh, once again, my name is Andrew Gutierrez. I live at 191 West Washington Street. So similar to the previous project, although a lot, a lot more extreme, I guess, than the previous project, I have a lot of concerns about the location of this one. This project, I'd also like to mention, by the way, that I'm on the city's pedestrian accessibility and bicycle task force, although I'm only representing myself at the moment. This location is, quite frankly, not even close to accessible or walkable or sustainable. To extend a bus line there is significantly out of the way of any of the bus lines right now that would decrease the frequency in the service of any existing route. We already have a shortage of HAPCAP. They don't have, there's no buses on weekends anymore now because they don't have enough money for that. So it would be quite out of the way to extend transit out there. To walk to transit, you'd have to take Hooper Street under 5033, and then under 682, all the way down to Richland again, to actually be able to get a bus to go anywhere. So, I mean, this would be a development where anyone living there would essentially need a car. need a car in order to live any semblance of a normal life, to get to work, to get to shops, to get to anything. And if the idea is that this is a housing project that's supposed to support people of different income levels, a lot of people aren't going to have a car, I just feel like it doesn't fill the purpose of what we're supposed to do. On the other hand, the original development we talked about on Palmero Road, while I had concerns about that intersection, City Planner Jennings talked about the potential of actually using this as a catalyst to transform Richland into a more of a pedestrianized, multi-use corridor that could actually be a long-term benefit for the city if that was the project to be built, instead of this one that we're now talking about. And I think that it's something really important that the city needs to be thinking about, especially with lower-income people, a lot of whom don't have a car and who need to access transit, who need to access walkways, bikeways, different ways to get around. But I heard a couple of people talk about kind of the needs for holistic, like, planning and zoning in the city, and I just want to finish by emphasizing that need. I'm not against in a vacuum either of these projects, because if the choice is nothing being built or something being built, we really desperately need housing. So I'm not saying, like, shut this down unless it fits every perfect walkability standard, right? I mean, we have homeless crisis, we need housing in the city. But going forward, long-term, I live on West Washington Street, I challenge every one of you to walk from Donkey Coffee at the top to Cider House all the way at the bottom. That's my walk. I'm going to walk home after this meeting down there. There are so many vacant lots where we could fit row houses, single-family homes, duplexes, small apartments. It's tough with the geography and the topography. There's tons of land to develop there. Go further on the west side where the fairgrounds are, there's tons of room to develop down there. I know some of the land is owned by the university, it gets trickier. The near east side neighborhoods, as we've talked about before, there's neighborhoods where we've talked about building in the past. These are areas that we should be looking at changing the zoning in those areas because they are walkable, they are accessible, they do have transit. And even the Uptown Corridor, there's a gas station on Court Street that I've heard in the past developers had been interested in turning into mixed-use development, but because of the parking minimums at the time backed out of the project. There's multiple parking lots on Court Street that are not always full, that could definitely be better served as mixed-use development. And you go just one block away from Court Street, you're already at single-family zoning. If we were upzoning in those areas, developers could come in, buy a house, turn it into a duplex, turn it into a small apartment building. It doesn't have to be a giant high-rise, but there's tons of opportunity to build stuff in what is really accessible, really good locations. And again, I want to be clear, I do not, like, strictly object to either of the projects we're considering today, because if it's just yes or no, we need the housing, we really do. But going forward, I would hope that this board thinks about pedestrian accessibility and walkability and kind of the values that Athens, a city that has declared a climate crisis, a city that prides itself on being walkable in a college town where you don't need a car, that we consider that going forward in terms of our planning and zoning, because I think it's something that, long-term, is going to be what makes Athens a desirable. People go to Europe, they go to different places to go to these cute walkable towns, and Athens is one of those. And if we can maintain that rather than sprawling like so many other cities have done, like, that's what makes Athens Athens. And if we consider that going forward, I think it would be really great for our city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? What's the pleasure of the board? Do we have a motion or?
I entertain a motion.
Okay.
To approve the change to?
R3. So that's changing an R1 and an R2, one R2 parcel and a number of R1 parcels to R3. Is there a second?
I second.
Second. Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So this one passes four, nothing. Four zero. Thank you very much. Okay. So we got, now we're back to communications once again, and Mr. Riggs.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll try to make this as quick as I can, it's been a long meeting. So we did hear, staff and this board did hear, some concerns about the process that we have seen for these two rezoning requests. We've been, we've been doing these rezoning requests, I've been around for almost six years now, and I noticed that our requests for zone changes are not like some of the other communities that I've been involved in, and a lot of other communities will put, will post a board up for, prior to Planning Commission, to notify the residents that there's a proposed zone change. And so what I'd like to do is I'd like to actually add that to our zoning code to allow zone code changes in chapter 29, or 2309, to better involve our residents into what we're doing, so that people aren't surprised. So we're trying to listen to the residents. They said they were surprised, they didn't know about this, try to give, try to give them something so that, so that that, we're a little more transparent than what we have been in the past.
So exactly, again, I'm sorry, exactly what change, what's the change?
Yeah, I'm sorry, my proposed change, or Megan and my proposed change is to add a sign, just almost the same as we do for our Title 41 developments. Whenever we have a Title 41 that comes to, before the board, we'll post the property indicating that there's a, there's a Title 41 site plan development. That notification is on-site, and that's between the communication and the case. So we'd like to do something similar for the zone change, for the zoning code change, sorry, zoning map change, so that we actually can, just like we do in Title 41, post that property, say that there's going to be a, there's a requested zone change that's going to come before the board. We would tell the, the change from zone to zone, and then the date and time of the meeting. And like to do that two weeks before.
Okay.
It's, it's almost exactly the same process as we do for Title 41.
Yeah. So we would have, by that, there would be electronic notification, an onsite notification?
No, just a sign.
At the property.
We put a sign on the property every time we have a Title 41. We would now do the same thing for zone changes to the zone map.
Okay. Go ahead.
And a public hearing? No?
Public notification. So Planning Commission doesn't have to do a public hearing, not by I revise code. The City Council has to do a public hearing.
Well, I guess I'm asking, could we, I mean, that would be something, I don't know if we want to consider that right now or not, to ask that or not.
You know, the only thought that I would have is, I mean, by virtue of the nature of the meeting, it's already a public hearing. I mean, I kind of see it as, you know, you know, and we do, you know, we announce them, you know, they're probably announced and the agenda's published, and then with the sign added on top of it, you know, that lets people know that something's coming forward.
Because we tend to have a hard time, and I do anyway, trying to get notifications out to the public, right? So if you try to find emails or try to, try to do electronic notifications, a lot of people don't pay attention to it. I think they'd be more apt to see a sign if they're, you know, if they're in the neighborhood, you're going to be driving by. So a sign there, I think, is something that would actually get maybe more attention than if you're trying to just do public notifications or electronic notifications.
Would, so, okay, so that would be a proposed, something that we'd vote on at the next meeting?
Yes, this is just a communication.
Okay. And then it would go to City Council?
Yes.
And that's, yes. That changes.
Okay.
I suppose if we had differences we wanted in this, if we had differences if we wanted in what they propose, we could scribble on that between now and the next meeting.
Yeah.
Right.
And then that, the thing we actually break forward, we.
Yeah. Okay. Which, which will be the third week in January.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So now we're at reports. Mr. Riggs, do you have any report?
I don't have anything additional, sir.
Okay. And Ms. Jennings, do you have a report?
I don't have anything additional.
Either. Okay. Good. So the next item on the agenda is opportunities for the citizens to speak about items that weren't covered on the agenda. Are there any, anybody wants to make any comments or suggestions? Seeing none, then I will say that we are, our next meeting is January 15th of 2025. I would wish everybody happy holidays and be safe and see you in '25. Thank you.